Good afternoon, everybody. It's Tuesday, April 23rd, 2015. Here at 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called order. I'd like to call upon Mike Ford, Pastor of the Granbury Earth Baptist Church, to lead us in our education, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Mayor Prokofsky and Vicky Parton, all right, in Texas.
Father, you've come before this occasion, and we thank you for this day. What a beautiful day it is.
Father, we pray and we lift up our city council to you. We thank you so much for each and every one of them, and for the blessing that they are to us. And so, Father, we pray that you would grant them your wisdom and your discernment to be men and women of character who would follow hard and fast after you as you guide us, as you instruct us, as you lead us. Father, that we would be a city, that would be a city set apart for you, and that the people, the citizens of this place, would be willing servants blessed by you. And so, Father, guide us and guide this meeting that we have, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our pledge to the state's flag, Texas. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks for all being here tonight. I'd like to make one quick announcement here, if I may. I want to announce that my partner next to me here, he's going to be leaving us. This is going to be his last council meeting, Wayne McKefin. This will be his last council meeting. He's going to go into semi-retirement, I think, or retirement, but it'll be the last time that he'll sit on this side of the crowd. So, Wayne, why don't you take just a couple minutes and say something to him?
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm never lost for words. Listen, I want everyone to know, I've really enjoyed the last 10 years here working for the city of Granbury and representing the citizens. This is a great community. My wife and I have decided to stay here and retire here and be a citizen, and I get to sit out and listen to the things that go on here. So, leaving the city, as a, you know, as city manager, I'm very pleased with where the city is today. As we found out, you know, there's people, rating agencies that like what we're doing. There's citizens every day that like what we're doing, and we've got a great staff. We've got a great council, and I see nothing but great future. We have so many entities coming onboard that's going to be having the city grow and helping the city grow. So, I'm excited. This is a good time for me to part my way and move on to other pastors. I've retired two other times from corporations. Can't seem to get it right, and I'm going to retire a third time. But it's always interesting to see the community. When I came to city of Granbury, I didn't understand the difference between corporate world and government world, but we have people here that are good or better than what the people you find in corporations, and the issues are just as complex or more complex. And so, it's been a really interesting timeframe here the last 10 years, and I thank everybody. And moving on to other, I plan to open up a couple of companies and have a consulting company and work when I want to work and don't work when I don't want to work. So, that's sort of the plan. So, thank you for allowing me to serve you. Thank you.
And we do thank you, Wayne, for stepping up and meeting that challenge. We know it was a tough challenge to come in as a financial director and to meet the challenge as a city manager, but you've done a great job, and we'll miss you, but we'll know where to find you.
Yep, I'm still around.
I'd like to move now into the consent agenda. The first item being to consider approving the council meeting minutes of April 7th, 2015, regular meeting, and also the second one being consider approving the closure of one block of Bridge Street between Houston and Crockett for the summer concerts on the Square Music Series. These series are going to be four, I think, starting in May and ending in August sometime. The next item being to consider approving orders 15-21, amending the budget for the general and utility funds of the fiscal year 2014-15, and this is merely adjustments that were made during the year and the councils or whatever the item might have been, and to clean those up a little bit. Also, to consider approving the purchase of the SCBA system equipment for the Deco Fire Equipment from Lubbock, Texas for $342,360 that we had talked about at the prior council meeting. Council, you had an opportunity to read over these consent agenda items. Are there any items you'd like to discuss or remove or make changes to? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas. I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. I got a second by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Next, I'd like to point out to the audience out there, we are going to make a change to the deliberation agenda. We're going to move item number 10 between item number five and six. We do try to accommodate when people are here from probably a long distance where they can get in and out of here. We did overlook this, so that is the reason for that, but we'll move to five, and that'll be the first agenda item, then we'll go to 10 and six. Number five is a staff report regarding Granbury Television and the plans to begin live streaming city council meeting online. And as you can see, the live streaming has started tonight, and that is the reason for the rearrangement of the furniture, so that we can get a little better view of the speakers, but the speakers will still be addressing the council. So, if I could get Sherry Hudson-Campbell to come up and to give a little more information on this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We just wanted to give everyone, particularly those who are coming up after me to speak this evening, a little bit of heads up. We have been talking for several months now, really, I guess in Kevin's case, for a couple years now, about being able to get to a place where we can live stream or broadcast city council meetings. And in this case, we're starting off with the live streaming capability. Tonight is sort of our test run. It is our intent to begin live streaming each council meeting with regularity, beginning with the meetings in May. And we now have a service that allows us to do that, equipment that allows us to do that. So, tonight's our test run, and I wanted everybody to know that you're going to be live, at least on the web for this evening and from this point forward in these meetings. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Council, any questions on this discussion for Sherry?
I would like to congratulate staff and the TV committee for their hard work, and thank you for this major improvement. Thanks.
Appreciate it. We're glad to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Two minutes.
Kevin's our test market tonight. He's watching to make sure it's all working. Thank you all very much for your support of Granbury TV and our ability to do this.
Thank you. As I pointed out, our next item will be to consider adopting Resolution 15-16, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred over the constructing improvements and extensions of the city's water system and the professional service rendered. So, it's not John Martin first, it's you this time, right, Ava?
Yes.
Okay, we'll let Ava kick it off, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm wanting to take the opportunity to give you a little background before I turn the floor over to John Martin, who can walk you through the steps, of the necessary steps, to accomplish his financing. On November 4th, as you know, the city council approved an application in order to request financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board through their drinking water revolving fund in the amount of $60,430,000 for the construction of our new water treatment plant. On March 26th, to your report is attached a letter from the Water Development Board approving this financing for, in the amount of $60,430,000. And at this time, what we are trying to do is get an authorization for the publication that is required before this issue can be authorized by the council. And it has to be published in the local newspaper 30 days, at least 30 days prior to the issuance, twice. And the notice must state the time and the place the city proposes to pass this ordinance and the amount that the funding will be for. With me, I have John Martin, our financial advisor, and also Keith Kendall is available for any questions for Inprotect, Hibs &amp; Todd. I will turn it over to John for him to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Evening, Council. This is really, I don't want to say no big deal, but it's, you all have been through this, been into this rodeo several times in terms of every, when you issue, these are combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. The only difference with this particular type of issuance is we have a buyer that's pre-arranged, and the buyer is the state Water Development Board, who current rates are in the 1.3% range. So, that's why we're going there. Versus open market where we'd be still pretty attractive, 3% range, but the process here is we're issuing combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, as the city has done many times in the past, and this is the first stage of the process, as Ava said. This directs the city secretary to give notice in the paper. It has to be published twice, first publication being at least 30 days before the city can take action. And the calendar that's in your packets shows you that we'd be back here June 2nd with the formal ordinance for your consideration, and at that point in time, all the rates will be in place, all the structure will be in place, and we will have, Mr. Kendall and I will have worked our way through the Water Development Board at least two or three times, right, Keith? They work you over pretty well down there. And our job from here is really to stay on top of them, because they tend to leave things on their desk if you don't, you know, beat on them a little bit. And so, from the engineering side and the finance side, and oftentimes, we've had situations in the past where those departments don't talk to one another. So, Keith and I will be in communication along with Ava and Alvin, your staff, to make sure this thing goes smoothly and we get it done in a timely manner. And the plan is to have funds in the bank for you all to start your project here at the end of June.
End of June?
End of June, correct.
What's the length of that project? Do we know that yet, or is it? Keith?
For the record, Keith Kendall with Inprotect, Hibs &amp; Todd, 2901 Glen Rose Highway, Granbury, Texas. The length of the project is 15 months for construction, Mayor, is what we have this time.
Council, is there any questions or concerns for either one of these gentlemen?
I have a question, too, for John.
Councilman Parsons?
30 years, John?
Let me look back. This is, yes, it's a, they, it goes out to 2045, correct? With a 10-year call feature on it, so we have the ability to prepay. Again, it's a very low rate, 1.2.
Be hard to think at full, 1.3. And so, they are tax certificate, right? So, they will be subject, our ad valorem will be subject to that, right?
Well, that's the ultimate security behind them, Mr. Parsons. You know, with the combination tax certificates, it's the combination with the revenue from the utility system. So, what's contemplated here is not to levy a tax for this, is that the enterprise fund would be used to, the net income from your utility system, water, sewer, electric, to be used to repay, the net income, to repay the debt, just like some of your other projects that we financed.
And if they're issued in June, what's the beginning date of the interest accumulation?
Next fiscal year.
Next fiscal?
So, it would be set up to where you would be able to put it in next year's 15-16 budget.
15-16 budget. And I thought I understood on these, it was interest only in the first year or interest only until the project's complete?
Yeah, we have to have, we can have interest only first year, and then once the, once you start the project, in that next fiscal year, you have to have some principal paydown. So, we've worked very carefully with the pro forma that's been developed by staff, that's been chewed on for, gosh, three years, I guess, trying to figure out, you know, planning for this day, really, to be able to finance this project.
Thanks.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
I've got a question for Keith.
Yes, sir.
Keith, could you comment on the quality, or an expectation of the quality of the water we'll get with the new plant versus, you know, what we face today, which lots of sediment, lots of replacement of water heaters, quality of the drinking water?
It's going to be a substantial difference. You've got both the microfiltration, which is an advanced technology recognized by the TCEQ, and then you've got reverse osmosis, so it's going to be a lot different. One, your process is almost 20 years old. It doesn't work as well, hence the reason we're going forward to replace the plant. Secondly, the technology of the day, particularly what we're using, is not even considered conventional water treatment. It's considered innovative and advanced treatment, particularly with the micro and ultra filtration. So, there's going to be a huge difference in the water quality that you'll see come out of this plant.
That's good news. Thank you.
Council, are there any more questions or concerns for these two gentlemen? Thank you.
You bet.
At this time, council, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution 15-16, authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligations for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for the construction improvements and extension of the city's water system.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second?
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, are there any more discussion? If not, Councilman Perkel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. Excuse me. Next, we'll move to number, item number six, consider approving change order number one, accepting weathered steel bridges in exchange for a $75,000 reduction in the contract price for Phase 2 of the Moments in Time Hiking Bike Trail. I'd like to call upon Aaron McLean with our Parks Department to brief the council on the findings on this, please.
Thank you, council, mayor, city manager. As you may know, we do have three sections of the bridge delivered to the job site at this time, and we come before you today to accept the bridge as, in its current state of weathered steel versus painting the bridges, the green, similar to the bridges just north of the building we're in now, for a $75,000 reduction in the price of the contract. The reason the bridges arrived as weathered steel is the shop drawings indicated the material for the bridges to be constructed out of, which those shop drawings were given to the bridge builders. And that material, it's a low alloy steel. It forms a protective coating. In layman's terms, it's called weathering steel, so they're referred to as weathered steel bridges. And it's not a bridge you ever have to paint. It's commonly used for highway bridges and pedestrian bridges. It doesn't build a thick rust, a bubbling, a rising rust. It weathers year after year. It gets wet and dries, and wet and dries, and that's the process. It may get darker over the years, but it will not corrode over the years. It's a steel that's designed to be exposed to the atmospheric corrosion. We have two bridges currently that are painted, that are visible from this building, and then we have a bridge that is already installed. It was installed nine years ago with the trail system, and it is a weathered steel bridge. And it's the bridge that's just north of Shanley Park, in between Shanley Park and the Fireman's Memorial Park on that trail system. So, that's what we come before you tonight, to accept the change order for a reduction in the cost of the job. We know we've been over, we've been beyond our reimbursable amount on this job. Everything over that is out of the city's pocket. Honestly, I don't know why I didn't think of, you know, offering this as a resolution earlier on to reduce the contract price. It's not a requirement. We've been back and forth with TexDOT discussing options, and they would prefer it, it's better for us long-term if it's not painted as far as maintenance cost. Studies show that in the life of the bridge, you can reduce the overall cost 20%, 30% by not painting and just using the weathered steel material. We already have signs of the bridges just north of this building needing some paint, repainting, and the issue is, in the future, if you're going to have one of these bridges blasted, whether it's sandblasting or water blasting or rock salt blasting, whatever type of prep you do over these waterways, you have to have that contained. Even these small structures here, we'll have to get bids in the near future to have those blasted and repainted, and it's going to be costly for these structures as well, because you have to contain all the blastings. You can't let them just go into the air or to the water.
In summing it up, this bridge that they built over there now is a maintenance-free bridge, I might say, where bridges that we have, like outside the city hall here, is the bridge that costs probably extended maintenance as we go through the years, but as some of the pictures have indicated with the peeling and stuff, right?
Right. And that bridge, the grand opening was nine years ago for that bridge and trail, and it already, as you can see from the pictures, it already needs some attention. And this bridge is about a fifth, the length of the bridge to be installed over here, this, the new bridge is going to be 326 feet long, so you can imagine the football, length of football field, and then some across that water canal, so.
Aaron, could you share a little bit with the council, the process or the procedure that Jay Mills was introduced to, of what type of bridges to build? I mean, they just, there was two contracts, or there was two different types of bridges to build that they had a choice to build, right?
There was a set of, and by the way, I do have David Todd with Inprotect, Hibs &amp; Todd here, if there's a question, I get stumped on, we can call on him. There was a set of shop plans that specked the material as low alloy steel, which is the weathered steel. And then, of course, in our overall, all plans that were, where we showed, not details of the bridge, but we showed the trail and the idea of the bridge, in those plans, we had a painted bridge. But, of course, those plans are not the ones that the bridge manufacturers used to construct the bridge, and that's how it ended up not being painted and shipped.
So, there are two different plans, and each one of them was?
Yes. One showed, painted, and the actual construction plans showed not.
Right. Council, are there any questions or concerns to Aaron at this time?
Oh, yeah, Mayor, I got.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, sir.
You're on.
The name of this company that made the mistake, it wouldn't be Jay Mills, would it?
That's who, that's not the bridge manufacturer, that is the contractor.
That's the same contractor we had on another project that we settled on a couple years ago.
That's correct.
Okay. Maybe we're going to learn a lesson, reckon? Maybe.
Okay. You said there's two sets of plans?
There's the shop drawings that you use to build a bridge, the detailed drawings of the bridge, and then our overall, our overall plan design that showed the trail connecting and then the bridge going over the canal, yes. And in those, it does, it states a painted bridge, but the shop drawings do not.
Which one of the plans did our staff with the city give Jay Mills Company to bid?
To bid the job?
To bid.
I'm going to assume it was the, he could answer better than I on that.
David Todd, Inprotect, Hibs &amp; Todd. Tony, this was a prefab bridge, and so, as the engineers, we give them some basic criteria for the length, the slopes, we make handicap accessibility, and give them some loading criteria, so when they bid this job, they go to the bridge manufacturers, and there's several of them, about five of them around the state, in the United States, and they were given a proposal from all these bridge manufacturers. So, the bridge, after the bids were taken and the contract was awarded, the bridge manufacturer sent to us what's called shop drawings, and our structural engineer reviewed that and approved those shop drawings. What slipped by was, we specified in the bid documents and the plans it'd be painted steel. The contractor was under the impression he was going to get painted steel bridges, and they showed up as weathered steel. And what slipped by everybody was just a miscommunication of, and the shop drawings call for the low alloy steel, and everybody thought that that was going to be sandblasted and painted there at Alabama where those things were put together. So, we thought we were getting painted steel. I think the city thought we were getting painted steel, and the contractor thought he was getting painted steel from the bridge manufacturer.
So, which plans did you give them?
Well, we just, we gave them some criteria. We didn't really give them a plan. We didn't design the bridge. They designed the bridge. We just give them the criteria of the width, the length, the slope of it, and that we wanted the painted steel. And so, they designed the bridge. After we approved the shop drawings, they designed the bridge and send us that.
Did your company approve them?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Did you take bids for the city?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I believe you just said there were five other bridges?
Bridge man, we don't control which bridge, because this, since it is an open bid situation, we don't control which bridge company that the general contractor gets that bridge from.
Well, I voted against them because I was told that they're the only ones that bid, and nobody else would bid on the bridge. Is that what you're saying?
No. We, we took bids, we took bids, and we had two bids. One of the bidders was disqualified by TexDOT because they did not acknowledge the addendum that was sent out, which had nothing to do with the design of the project. It was something about, I think it was wage rates, bacon wage rates, and he did not acknowledge the addendum, so he was kicked out. So, we only had one bidder at that time, and TexDOT basically told us, and Aaron, you backed me up, if we do not, if the city does not award this contract to this one legitimate bidder, that there was a good chance that the funds would be withdrawn from the city to do this project with. So, I think that's what that you were presented with. This was the only bidder we had for the project, because the other one was disqualified.
What would it cost them to fix the bridge up, take it back, remanufacture it, and bring it back?
And I don't know that number. I'm going to tell you from the literature that I have pulled off the internet, that I have sent, Aaron, they have, just in their general literature, they say that a weathered steel bridge is anywhere from 20% cheaper than painted bridges to 30% cheaper than galvanized bridges. And there were two bridge companies that had that on their website. I also contacted Pioneer Bridge Company, who has supplied most of these bridges back here, and talked to the salesman, and he told me that generally, you know, it depends on a lot of things, how many members and all that stuff, but generally, he said 15% reduction over weathered steel versus painted steel is what they see as a normal financial gain on that. This proposal that they've given us is about, right at 13%.
Cheaper?
Cheaper. Well, yeah.
Then what we paid?
Right.
Okay. We paid 500 and, what was that?
Eight hundred and eighty-two thousand is what we're paying for the project. The bridge is, just the bridge is, was six hundred and fourteen thousand.
So they're six hundred and fourteen?
Right.
So they're not even giving us twenty percent. They're not even giving us fifteen percent?
Well, they're they're giving us right at, just close to thirteen percent is what they're, what they've offered.
It did cost them a lot more than that to pick it up, take it back, and do it right, right?
Probably, yes, sir.
Did, in our bid, when you were handling it for the city, and I know I asked that question, and I would like it for the record, I want to pull the minutes of our meeting for me, please, on the, when we voted on this. But I asked that they'd put a time limit in there, we wouldn't be out there forever getting this thing delivered and installed. I don't know if that was put in or not, to be honest with you, Mayor. But I do remember talking about it. Did we put a deadline on them?
We had a, we we worked with Text Dot, and we had a hundred and twenty-eight day working day schedule on this project.
So what happens now?
Well, they still think that even we've had this delay while we discussed this painting versus no painting, they still think they can get the project done in that hundred and twenty-eight working day schedule. So we're not, they're not asking for a, any contract extension of time.
But if if we voted not to accept their carry to seventy-five dollars or seventy-five thousand and said, you know, it's worth a lot more than that, then where do we go from there?
Well, I mean, we, you know, we could, you know, we can negotiate, we possibly can negotiate a different price with them. Or if it's just, no, we're not going to accept those, there's going to something, you know, there's going to be some type of contract extension. There may be some other issues that come up if we tell them to send them back and get them painted.
Well, whenever, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but I'm, I'm hearing you say from fifteen to twenty percent is where it should have been.
That, again, it it depends on the number of member. I mean, it's, this is just a ballpark range that two companies say that weathered steel is overpainted and galvanized, because getting, you know, galvanized and cost more. The Pioneer guys that I talked to, he said it's more like fifteen percent. But again, there's a lot of variables that go into that. So
Well, fifteen is ninety thousand dollars.
Okay.
And at twenty, you're a hundred and twenty-two or three thousand. There's a lot of difference from seventy-five thousand. Only got one vote, I'd ask for a hundred.
If I might, first of all, I want to make sure everybody understands that Jay Mills caught, caught the flaw in his offering seventy-five thousand. When it came to him, he realized it should have been painted probably. But when it went to the factory with the oversight from whoever, it came from them, from the bridge manufacturers as not painted. Jay Mills, whoa, that was supposed to be painted. So he is offering the seventy-five thousand dollar reduction, right?
I don't know, I don't know if if the bridge manufacturer is offering, I don't know where that's
Where that's coming, it doesn't matter, okay.
Yeah.
But we are getting the opportunity to get a bridge that we were going to pay X amount of dollars for, for seventy-five thousand dollars cheaper. And it is a bridge that we already have in one of our parks. And it's a successful bridge. It it fits our parks. It's a, to me, it looks more historical because it has the rustic look and not the matching of the City Hall. I think this one fits good out here because it does match City Hall. But as we get out into the other areas, a, the Rust-Oleum looking bridge matches a historical look, as you might say. But it also is going to last a lot longer, and there will be no additional maintenance to this bridge. So that's where we're at on this. I don't think that Jay Mills is saying they won't redo them or whatever, but it's how long, how much we want to pay for a bridge and how long we want to wait to get a bridge installed. Is that correct?
Yep.
But we got them under contract, and we got them a hundred and twenty-eight days.
Exactly.
So we're a lot better shape today than we were three years ago on another project with them. So
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying that my vote would be, tell them we want a hundred thousand dollars, and that we either get it, or they run over the hundred and twenty-eight, and then we go after them on that. I'm, I'm tired of corporations coming here taking advantage of the city, of our taxpayers. We represent them. We don't represent Jay Mills. We don't represent bridge builders. We represent our taxpayers. And it's time we put our foot down and say, look, that's enough. That's my one vote.
Can I just clarify one thing? And that is Jay Mills is offering you a thirteen percent reduction in contract, and they didn't screw anything up.
Yeah.
And that it was a mistake by a bridge manufacturer in Alabama, not Jay Mills. And I'm hearing
Who was our contract with, old attorney?
The contract is with Jay Mills, but they didn't build the bridge. And so I think the the clarification is you're, you're kind of saying some things about a company that didn't screw up.
They delivered, and Jay Mills caught it.
Okay. My question then is this, Derek. Did we write a contract with the bridge builder? Or did we write a contract and you prepared it for Jay Mills?
I think that's been answered repeatedly. The answer is that the contract's with Jay Mills, and they hired a bridge manufacturer. But there was two sets of specs.
The nest between them and that
I'm sorry, I don't think I was finished, Mr. Allen. I think there's two sets of specs that were sent out. And the reality is, you're getting a, you're being offered a thirteen, thirteen percent reduction in price by a company that I don't, I don't know did anything wrong.
But that was my point. They're, they're offering us that. They didn't, they didn't do the thing about, and as Todd had indicated, there were the two specs floating around there that got pushed forward. And even to the bridge builder, he probably looked at the one and said, this is what they want. Yes, maybe somebody should have communicated that with the bridge builder down there to make sure that it was a painted bridge. But that didn't happen. And so after the fact, Jay Mills saying, hey, I understand this. I don't want to drag this out any longer. I'm offering seventy-five thousand, which is to me a fair deal. And it's not a bridge that we don't have already.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
This is for the city attorney. What is the obligation of Jay Mills to fulfill the contract as, as written?
Well, I mean, obviously, they have to fill the contract. If, I mean, I don't understand the question. The obligation is, yes, you have a contract, you have to fulfill the terms of the contract.
And the terms of the contract is a painted bridge, right?
I don't remember the specific details. I don't think the contract says specifically painted.
It, it does, and the plans and specifications and even the bid items, it does say that the bridges will be painted, and they will match the green color of the existing bridges.
Well, I would propose that we do go back to them with a counter of one hundred thousand dollars and see what happens, and bring it back to council next, in two weeks.
Counsel, any more discussion? Councilman Couch, you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead. Did you get that, Colonel, with the motion? Okay, we, we have a motion to consider
Mayor, could I add one thing?
Go ahead.
I did find out today that if, if we choose to go this route, you know, we were under the, under the impression that we could always have them painted here. We did find out that Text Dot will not support us painting the bridges here if it comes down to that. So they would have to be shipped back to Alabama if we can't work out a hundred thousand dollar price. I just wanted to let that be known because that is different from the agenda report, because I found that out after the fact.
Okay. Well, it's, it's really not a, a public hearing tonight, so.
Aaron, can you say it again, sir? I didn't understand what you said.
In, in the staff report, we were under the assumption, we were, we've been communicating with Text Dot, that if it comes down to it and we have to get the bridge painted, we thought there for a while, we could have it prepped and painted on site. And Text Dot, since we did the staff report, has come back and said, no, we can't allow that for environmental concerns.
Sure.
It would need to be shipped back to the manufacturer for prepping and painting. I just wanted to make sure you aware that. It does differ from the staff report.
And and it's no different than when we get ready to paint the bridge out here that we're going to have to repaint. We're going to have to put that in a dome
Yep.
to repaint it, and it's going to be really expensive.
There, there is a, there's, there's a system out there where you do not have to take it back down to bare metal that'll encapsulate, you know, some of those spots on these existing bridges. And we looked at that for these bridges that we're talking about. And Text Dot would not allow us to do, know that method.
Mayor, a second motion. It may
Okay, I've got, I've got a second, I've got a, a motion on the floor to consider approving the change order or, or consider offering Jay Mills the a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the contract price for Phase Two of the Moments in Time Hiking Bike Trail Bridges. And I have a second for that from Councilman Allen.
Okay, but we want that on May 5th agenda.
Right. For the May 5th agenda?
Yeah.
Counsel, any other discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote on this motion?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Nay. Counsel, Person Myers?
Aye.
Okay, that is, that is approved to do so. Thank you. Our next item is to consider acceptance of the report from the Charter Review Commission. I'm going to let our attorney, Stuart Neal, kick this one off. As you know, we went through the charter review for some time, and now they've come up with some recommendations or the changes to the, changes and add-ons to the charter. So if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council appointed the Charter Review Commission back in December of two thousand and fourteen. Since that time, the commission has met repeatedly and has gone through the charter diligently and has ready, has created a report that they are ready to present tonight for your consideration. The next step in the process would be if the council wants to adopt some of these recommended changes or all of the recommended changes, we will present an ordinance to the council calling for the election that's required to put those changes in place. And then that election would be on the November ballot at the same time as the city council elections. And I believe Mayor, Mr. John Grace, the chairman of the Charter Review Commission, is here.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager and staff. I'm John Grace. I live at twenty-three, twenty-one River Road in Granbury, Texas. I was informed back in November that I was appointed to the commission as, along with six other citizens, Mr. Tom Baker, Kathy Briscoe, Rita Kay, Eddie Rodriguez, David Southern, and Maurice Walton. And of course, also a very important participant was our city attorney, Stuart Neal, whose assistance was essential to our process. Anyway, in accordance with the charter, Section twelve point two, to that end, we have held numerous meetings, a public hearing, and had queried both the council and the staff in regards to the charter. So I'm here tonight with the amendments deemed desirable to improve the effective application of the charter to its current conditions. It is the consensus of the commission that the charter is a sound and effective document. However, and I'm sure you all wish that I probably stopped at the end of that last sentence. However, we are recommending a few changes which we believe will improve the charter. Now, some of these changes are purely administrative as an example of the inclusion of a table of contents. We feel that would be beneficial. Updating portions of the charter also to bring the charter in compliance with state law and renumbering all the sections within the charter, doing away with the blank sections and that sort of thing. Some recommendations also bring in line the charter to the current business practices of the city. One such one is the removing the Public Information Office or responsibility from the city secretary. Also, removing the requirement for the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board, which is Section eleven of the city charter. And finally, our recommendations include in Section two point oh one, removing the requirement for single-member districts. And the second one would be in Section five point oh two, changing the number of members of the council to place items on the agenda from one to two. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, John. Counsel, is there any questions or concerns for John Grace or the attorney?
All right.
John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Counsel, at this time, we will entertain a motion to accept the report from the Charter Review Commission and accept those changes.
Still moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Aye.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Counsel, any more discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Couch.
I'd like to thank John and the committee. I know that's a, a lot of work
Did.
to go through the, the charter. I appreciate your time and this effort.
Mayor, I'll just clarify that the next, the next step will be you'll see an ordinance come on your council agenda to call for the election, and it will include the ballot, let the proposed ballot language for you to review. And then that election will be in November.
May I ask a question?
We do have to accept this, this report is presented, though, right?
Yeah, you can accept the report and
I have another question for
Councilman Parsons.
As, and at that meeting, when we considered the resolution, we would be able to vote which are items we wanted on there, which ones we didn't?
Yeah, the ordinance will have an attachment on the back as Exhibit A, and then you can, you can amend that exhibit. It's your ordinance, so you can amend that exhibit if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, is there any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Those will be accepted. Our next item is to consider approving engagement agreements with George Morgan and SNEP and C for the annual audit services for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and seventeen. As you can see on your, on your report there, that the extended agreement with the auditors is, is now coming up for renewal. And Ava Gregory will speak a little bit on why we want to consider maybe keeping them on board.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, our charter requires that the independent audit will be performed each year for all city accounts at the end of the fiscal year. And our current engagement agreement with George Morgan and SNEP, I will refer to them as GMS, had expired upon the completion of the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen audit. George Morgan and SNEP for the past several years have provided high level of knowledge and experience for our city. And they have extensive experience in governmental audits, have served the industry for over fifty years. They have seven CPAs on their staff, and they were all involved with taxation audits and rendering management services for various governmental entities. Upon completion of their contract, they will continue providing us the same services that, as they have. And that includes meeting, reporting deadlines, carrying out annual procedures, testing very, various systems and controls, and reporting their findings back to the city. They will also present a management letter to the city each year and present the audit to the city council at the time that it's due. At this time, I would like to recommend extending the contract with them again because there are two factors that play an important role at this time. And as you know, the Governmental Accounting Standard Board continuously changing the required accounting reporting. And GMS have proved to be on top of these changes and have been able to guide the city through implementing these necessary changes. Currently, as you were presented to back in March, we, there are two major Gatsby changes that is in works currently, the Statement Number sixty-seven, Number sixty-eight, that has to do with pension reporting and accounting. And this is a very important change that our audit firm has been able to update us on and keep us current. It has to be implemented by the end of this year. It has to be implemented by the end of this year. Secondly, they have extensive experience in single audits that we also will need with our current federal grants that we have and the ones we are applying for. The proposed engagement agreements, you have three engagement agreements, separate agreements in front of you for fiscal year ending in 2015, 16, and 17. The contractual price for those is $38,000. That is only a $1,500 increase compared to what we have paid for the last three years, which is less than 4%. And staff would recommend staying with the audit firm at this time because we have been going through a lot of changes and especially based on the Gatsby changes, it would be good to retain somebody with such a high experience and knowledge to guide us through the necessary changes that we have to implement by the end of this year regarding pension accounting.
Thank you, Ava.
Thank you.
Counsel, is there any questions for Ava Gregory? I do think they do a, a great job with this, so hopefully they continue that. Okay, thank you, Ava. Counselors, any more discussion? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the engagement agreement with George Morgan and Sneed for the annual audit services for the fiscal years ending September the 30th, 2015, 16, and 2017.
Still moved?
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you, Ava. Our next item is to receive and discuss a report from the DMO Transition Committee on the research and the recommendations regarding a potential transition from a city-operated CBB to an independent organization. Councilperson Myers has requested this item and I'll let her kick this off. Person Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this is just to give the council an update. In the audience, we have three committee members and that is Jim Leach, Diane Hedges, and Scott Young. As a reminder, Jim is representing the Hotel B&amp;Bs. Scott Young is representing the Merchants Association and Diane is representing a seat with the current tab board. So that is our committee. We have met three times. The first time on March 11th, subsequent meetings were on April 2nd and then April 16th. Our first meeting, we Skyped in Mr. Bill Geist, he is the expert that the city hired to give us some recommendations in regards to our transition to an independent DMO or CBB. And he, um, he kind of gave us some guidance as to what we should be doing in the future. One was to reach out to other cities that have currently made that transition and each of us were tasked with calling each one of the directors of these cities. They were cities from Kissimmee, Florida, Stillwater, Oklahoma, Sherman, Texas, Hartford, Maryland, Gatlinburg, Tennessee. And many of these cities looked very similar to ours. Surprising enough, when we had discussions with these cities, each of the committee members found that many of the cities were very positive about a transition to the cities. The overall consensus was that city government cannot be as flexible as they need to be when it comes to running, running and focusing a independent CBB that really allows you to have a laser focus on your, on your tourism market. And so, interesting enough, many of the committee members were thinking that they would hear some negative comments. Some did use Bill's services through the transition and some of them did not, so we had a good sample of some cities that gave us some good recommendations. So, um, most of the evidence that we have seen points towards moving towards an independent, but what we haven't determined at this point is if that independent fits Granbury's model and so that's kind of where we are. The second meeting on, on April 2nd was to discuss the fundamentals of destination marketing, which was provided to you in your information packet. This particular presentation came from Shannon Overby and Kristy Morrison. Both are directors, one at Bryan College Station, the other one at Bill, Visit Stillwater in Stillwater, Oklahoma. And just as a quick reminder, I wanted to go over some of the information that was in that and it, I'll make it very brief. Just, again, the makeup of today's CVVs or DMOs are either not for, not-for-profit, independent, city department, or profit-making organizations. So as you know, we're currently a city and we're looking at the not for, not-for-profit. Interesting enough, out of this presentation and a lot of the information in this presentation is, is some of the items that we will be moving forward and looking at and that, what was provided us, to us, was most of the DMOs are not-for-profit and they're moving towards that way because they can laser focus on their tourism market. Funding for these DMOs come from different sources. Obviously, the primary funding is hot tax, but there are alternative funding sources and we were real interested to hear about other ways that this DMO can be funded, either through booking engines or sponsorships, memberships, advertising sales, co-op programs. And a lot of the information that was provided to us by these two women that, that managed the independent DMOs from other cities is the first and foremost thing that we can look at is finding a mentor and that's something that we did as we reached out to these other cities. I think Jim was able to meet live with, with a DMO director from another state, which was really good because now we've all established these good relationships that will help us determine whether or not this is where the city wants to go moving forward. There are challenges with DMOs, you know, we have to, in the future, think about our mission statement and our strategic issues, what, what Granbury looks like in comparison to the, these other cities, but also look at what Granbury is individually. And we've got to make sure that we make a good decision for our city and make a good decision for our tourism market, our visitor market, our hotel market. We're working with our, our conference center and every resource that we have, as I said, is utilized to its highest potential. And so, one of the things that we hear over and over again from many of these other directors is what is it that they measure for success? And they all have written goals, they all have reports, they all have different triggers that they use for what they consider a, a trackable, positive source of information and resource and financial dollars for their city, whether it's room nights booked, whether it's sales calls, whether it's bids for people to come into their city, trade shows that come in town. And what we hear again, over and over again, is they're all working together for, for, I mean, we're all trying to draw tourism to our cities and so they all have different things that they're highly involved in and they're constantly networking with each other to make sure that they, that they're staying on top of it. This is a fast-paced market and they all work very fast and they're always one step ahead of where they need to be to make sure that they are using those dollars that they receive to those highest potential because they have to be held accountable for the dollars that they, and they are. They have very strategic business plans, they're constantly making sure that they have open and transparent books and they give pretty regular reports to council, to their board members. So everything that we see is this isn't something that's taken like the days old. I mean, they are very professional, they are fast-paced, and they understand that this is a very competitive market and they need to stay in front of that market. One of the, um, most successful DMOs that is close to us is Irving and there was a statement that was taken out of the slide presentation that I thought was a very impactful statement and that is from Maura Gass, who's from the Irving DMO. She says, "If you build a place where people want to visit, you build a place that people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people need to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where businesses want to be. And finally, if you build a place where businesses, you'll build a place where people want to visit." So it's full circle and that's what we're trying to achieve here. So to update the council, we'll have eight meetings prior to budget meeting. Those dates have been set by our committee. They'll be on 4/29, 5/7, 5/20, 5/27, 6/3, 6/10, 6/17, and 7/1. Give or take, if we have an emergency and we have to change some things, those are going to be our upcoming dates. And so that, I hope, shows the council commitment that this committee is going to meet almost weekly, so we make sure that we have all the information at budget meeting for the council to decide whether or not we want to move towards a independent or stay within the city. In our upcoming meetings, we are going to take one of Bill Geist's first recommendations and that is to move towards filing for a 501(c)(6). We're going to work on our mission statements, our purpose, and we're going to begin to draft some bylaws, just so you can see what this might look like if we go that way. And obviously, if we stay within the city, this could be potential topic that could come into the future, so we feel like we're doing this work and although we may not move towards an independent, we've at le, at least done some legwork in case it ever gets brought up again. And I think that's my report. Oh, I should have said, not only the bylaws, but I should have ended it with funding and budget because I know that's important to Mr. Allen down there.
Oh, yeah.
So that will be something that we look at as well. So those will be our points in our future eight meetings. This time I'll take any questions.
Myers, I got a couple of questions here. At what time, I, I know we talked about forming this committee starting with four, at what time does that committee expand to, is the next one, two more people or four more people?
I think the committee hasn't determined, I mean, Mr. Geist discussed our, our board, the, the actual board being a 14-member board, if I can recall, I believe it's a 14-member board. But in our discussions with other cities and cities of our size, they don't have 14-member boards and I keep going back to, we're not going to do this our way, we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So at this point, I believe we're going to keep it like it is and then when we get closer, we'll determine how many board members we'll need. There, we found boards that were very successful at seven and we found boards that had 30-plus members and so we're going to be somewhere in between that, but we have not determined when that's going to be.
And the other, the other question was, I had a, I had an opportunity to look over some of the minutes of one of the prior meetings and I noticed as I was reading through there some of the comparisons or some of the, the cities that you reached out to had, I was looking for one that was actually, looked a lot like Granbury, I didn't see a lot of them that was the exact replica of Granbury, even though they, they moved from being a joint from the county or an individual or private or, or maybe even some of them had three different places where they were coming from, but they, obviously, they were in some kind of an issue or trouble with that and wanted to go to an, to a standalone. Are there any communities out there that you researched that are, I want to say exactly the way that Granbury is where it's all run underneath the city window totally?
Well, certainly there's a lot of cities that look identical to Granbury. I think what Mr. Geist was wanting us to do was get a feel of what that transition process felt, felt like. So the cities that he recommended were cities that had recently gone through this transition and that way we could determine whether or not this was something, you know, what does that transition look like versus whether or not we were looking at a city that looked just like Granbury. We were looking more at the transitional process, am I right?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Counsel, any more questions, any concerns over the, the, the work that they've done up to this point?
Looks like you've done a lot of work.
Sure have.
I'd like to thank Councilman Myers for her initiative and, and leadership in putting this together and the citizens for being a part of that. Thank you very much.
If there's no further discussion, we'll move to the, the next item. And that being a, well, I'm sorry, the next item, item number 11, has been removed because of some changes and some things that have, have left that agenda item, so that item will not be considered. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into the open session and that all members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section. Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney and the airport recommendation and also section 551.086, certain public power utilities competitive matters, possible sale of electric company. We shall return. The council will now reconvene into open session, there was no action taken in closed session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If not, the council is adjourned.